They probably had phone calls asking us about the YouTube and about council meetings and so forth. And it's nice for us to be able to say, if you watch YouTube, or if you go through your local paper, our council news is always there. So we appreciate your attendance. And we hope that your husband is on the mend, but you're doing a spectacular job. Thank you very much. I'm gonna thank you for being here. Okay, it's five o'clock, so we call this meeting to order. We've also already had our opening prayer. Is additions and adoption of the agenda? Any additions? Seeing nothing, can I have a motion for the adoption? Councilor Drew? All in favor? Carried. We have no delegations tonight, so we're moving along pretty good. Adoption of the minutes of December 4th, 2018. Is there anything that's come out of those minutes? Councilor Brown, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good. I make a motion to adopt the minutes of December 4th, 2018.
Okay. Any questions? Call for vote. All in favor? Thank you. All right, bylaw policy. 6A, draft council protocol. If you remember, we rescinded the operations policy. This is our new protocol, council protocol. Have you all read this? Are you all in favor of them? Do we need to worry about anything on those? Mayor?
I just would like administration to clarify five last bullet, so that we are conforming to what we're doing right now.
Sure. So the mayor brought up the last bullet, and five was to annually review. I just would like to change that, or I can change it before the council meeting, to say review as per contract, because mine is an annual. So very simple, and I realize there's a couple of spelling mistakes in there, too. I'll get that tidied up before council meeting, for sure. But that was something the mayor brought up. I think it's no problem.
So everybody's good with that? I don't think we need to have a motion on this until we-
No, just if there's any input, or you don't like something, or I can tweak it before we come for any kind of motion.
There is something now that I'd like a little bit of clarification. On council development, under seven, we have there the word annually evaluate council effectiveness. Right now, we're doing it quarterly.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand, is the quarterly a better fit for us than the annual? Annual is a long time out.
Quarterly is, I don't know if you get a real good picture, because so much happens really quick. I would say every six months anyways.
I like the idea of quarterly because of the new councilors. You know, we're covering a lot of material, and there's going to be questions come up. What do you think? What about the last quarter?
So what if it says at least annually?
Yeah.
So that's your minimum.
Then we can decide-
That you must do it at least?
Yeah, I'm in that, too.
Okay. Is there any others, Mayor?
No, I just looked at seven, the second bullet, too. I just was thinking, can we, does it cover the fact that, one, a new council is selected? The training is mandated to happen pretty well soon hereafter.
Well, that's an MGA requirement.
Right. So I don't know, does that cover it the way it's written?
I can develop that a little further.
Yeah, maybe, just to make sure that, one, there is a new council. I mean, for us, we know we are getting training whenever we need it, but when a new council is there. Thank you.
All the council moves, what the Act of the ABC stands for?
Yeah.
Agencies, boards, committees. Okay? Sometimes we use these things, and we don't understand what we're reading. Very good. So Jeff will have that down there for council. Okay. Bylaw number 1672, truth and reconsideration.
Are you not doing the agency?
Oh, I'm sorry. 6B, agency, boards, and committee review. This is a big item, and how I'd like to handle it, if it's all right with council. We could spend hours on this. This, what I would-
That's nine o'clock.
What I would like to do is, let me go down this list, and I'll put a comment on it, if somebody else wants to comment on it, and then we'll take the seriousness of some of these committees. So let's start with the Antne Levitt irrigation, which I serve on. It's just a annual general meeting. Basically, if they have any meetings during the month, I'd still like them to send us the minutes of those meetings, and if there's anything really seriously comes out of it, then we can review it as a council. Ag Society is Councilor Brown. Councilor Brown, how do you feel about that?
I love it.
Okay?
How do you, non-sarcastically?
Okay. I'm answering the question.
Can I ask you something, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Are there subcommittee from that committee that you will have to attend or not?
Yes. Well, right now, there is, because we're reviewing the-
Governance.
Yeah. No, not their governance, but their joint use agreement. And so we're meeting, Jeff and I are meeting with them to try and come up with the best joint use agreement that we can come up with. So I am on that one right now.
Okay, so you would call it an ad hoc committee at that point?
Yes.
As a sub?
Yep, it is.
I have a question, too, to Councilor Brown.
And how many times do you meet on that one right now?
Not very often. We just have met once, and they were happy with Jeff's direction, and so I don't foresee it being our ag ad hoc.
Ad hoc, just meaning it being-
I know. We've met once. I don't foresee us meeting tons with it.
No, once or twice more, maybe.
Okay. All right. So it's short term?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I think Councilor Barnes wanted to ask something.
Yes, Councilor Brown.
I just wanted to ask, how are things, we're going, if I recall, a month or so ago, there was some concern that there was a duplication of what was going on, the accounting with the Ag Society?
Correct.
Accounting for some stuff that was really belonging to the town? Were they been worked out?
If I can?
Yes.
So on that, that's why we're coming up with the joint use agreement, because we would like a list of assets, what they should be. It wasn't their fault for listing the building and land as their assets. It just was done previously, and so I just picked it up and wanted clarification. I want things separate. So that's a big reason we've come up with the new joint use agreement with them, because we feel like we want absolutes. We want to know who handles this, who has insurance on this, who's claiming land assets, all of that, and they can have their tractors and stalls, and so that's kind of the point of this.
Thank you.
You bet.
Before I go on, I'd like to welcome the Andersons into the gallery, just observing council. So welcome. Airport, I serve on the airport. I find this a committee that, it is an important committee. All these committees are important, but my attendance at the committee, I don't think it needs to be there every month. As long as we get a financial statement and minutes for this to us, then if there's anything that comes out of, we can ask that individual from the airport to come and make a representation to council, and then we can discuss it. Now, I want to be clear on something, councilors. As we review these committees, it is not gonna, how should I put this? It's not going to be determined on your quarterly payments, okay?
It's not going to modify?
Yeah, exactly. So don't worry about that, because we are paid to be on these committees, okay? But we have to keep in mind that we want minutes from these meetings, so that we can review them as councilors. Okay, so moving on. Alberta Southwest, Councilor Barnes?
Can I just ask something quickly?
Yes.
I'll interject probably a few times tonight. So with the airport, if you don't feel you need to be there monthly, should we make a change there? Like, is that something where you think we should inform the airport committee that we will attend the AGM, or we will attend on a different frequency? I'd like to come out of here tonight with a few kind of definitives on how we want to go about this. So I just throw that out there as how you want to proceed with it.
I think, I think as far as the airport is committed, if they have a commitment, or they're trying to make a change, and it needs some financial situation, I think that needs to be reported, and I can go to that meeting. If they'll get, if the chairman of the committee will just say, you know, "Councillor, we'd like to have you at this meeting, because we're going to discuss a new facility," or something like that, building, then I think I need to be there.
So in that case, in the absence of a councillor monthly, and with a group that gets our financial backing, would you recommend we have the chair report to council annually?
I would say so.
Is that reasonable? Whoever the chair, not you, but the citizen-at-large chair, comes and reports to council annually, at least? Is that reasonable?
That's certainly, I think it's important. Okay? Are you good with that?
And I'll tell you what I'm leading up to here a little bit, and I'll talk to this at the end.
Oh, thanks.
Anytime we have town committees that are bylaws of ours, or any that are town committees, I'd like to make sure we have an associated bylaw. But if they're a third-party committee, I'd still like to see us have some, we'll call them protocols, around how we're interacting with them. So in this case, we may have an airport protocol that says, while we respect it's a third-party committee, we will request the chair to report annually, for example.
Are you good with that, councilors?
Good.
Okay. Okay, Alberta Southwest, Councilor Barnes?
Alberta Southwest is, I really enjoy going to those meetings. Wintertime's a little more difficult sometimes, the weather's not good. Like, the last meeting was nasty. That was that blizzard night, I couldn't make it to the meeting, and there was quite a few people that didn't. But they do a good work for tourism in southern Alberta, and they've been awarded by the province several times, and kudos to them for the good work that they're doing. Bev really works hard, and she's really, really good. She knows how to find extra funding and stuff when we need it, and they're very accountable. There's always, every meeting, there's an accounting of what's been spent, and it goes, our whole committee, which I think there's 15 or 16 of us, can't remember, but we all look it over and vote on accepting it, and so it's very, they're very accountable.
Okay.
So it's-
Now, remember, our membership fees are $3,800 a year. This is one of the RDAs that we-
RDAs, yeah.
We belong to.
Yeah. There are times when they get a little political, and I have to remind them.
Good.
But-
So you need to be there?
I try to be there every time.
Okay.
They meet at least eight times a year.
Okay.
There's not going to be a meeting in February. Bev's going to be away at some other things, so anyways, but yeah, at least.
All right.
One of the concerns I do have, and Jeff, maybe you can help me out with this, they like to move the meetings around on a regular basis. We haven't had one here in Cartston for, I think, three years. And so I just want to be able to tell them that, hey, yeah, this particular month, we could have the meeting here in Cartston.
Yeah.
And where would be the best place to hold that?
How many do you have?
We have a dinner each time. They always feed everybody, because everybody's coming from all over the place.
About 16 people, so it's strong, it'll be fine.
You either cater here, or you can go to Colston.
Okay.
You know, have Ivan put it on in that back room there.
Okay. That would be good. And at these meetings, too, anybody on council is welcome to come when they're held in our town, so we just need to know how many would come. We've got a list of where the next meetings are going to be for the next four months or so.
Good. So there's a note there.
That's in a nutshell.
You're neat there, so we'll continue with that. Our committee is myself, Councilor Drew, and Councilor Self. We only meet once a year, so that's taken care of. Chief Valen Soloway is a big one. Councilor Self, do you want to speak to that?
I love talking trash, it's all good.
Okay. Absolutely, thank you. Chinook Arch. Now, this is a concern. It's a, could, Councilor Barnes, I'm going to ask you for your advice. Could we have, what's his name, come annually?
Robin? He would be more than happy to. He's mentioned it, now, he did come, two years, five, six months ago, but he would love to come.
So could we, could we just?
Yeah, you just tell me when you would like him to come, and I'll make sure that he's, that he's here.
Okay. So now, do you feel like you need to be there every, every meeting?
Absolutely. They do a, well, they have, they have three meetings, three Chinook Arch meetings per year, and then I'm on the finance committee, which meets four times a year as well. So there's seven meetings there that I'm on.
Well, we go ahead and said, you know, you're on that finance. Is the finance committee meeting more important that you attend, or is it-
Well, they're both are important. I couldn't say that they're-
And you don't think that Robin could summarize the Chinook?
Well, there's a lot of things, because there's so much, like, there's 40-some other people on that board, that Board of Trustees, and they all have a lot of input, and I really don't want to miss out on that input, because I've given lots of input and direction with that. And because of the type of budget that our library has, that we're responsible for, the big requisition, I want to make sure that we're not being left out.
Okay. Now, one of the things that I want to make sure that's-
We meet monthly with the library.
Yeah, that's what it will be. Okay, the reason why we're reviewing this is because some of us councilors feel overwhelmed with some of the committees that we've been assigned to. You know, we're attending seven, eight committees a month, Councilor Self.
Who's feeling overwhelmed?
Well, not mentioning any names, there has been some concerns.
I'm fine. I don't have any problems with meetings that I go to.
Why don't we just ask, rather than belaboring this, ask if everyone is fine with what they've got, and move on? If I can just throw out, too, there has been a lot of discussion about the necessity of some of them, too, just from a principle point of view.
Okay.
And whether we need to be assigning all of them. So the question comes down to, if these groups have sufficient internal controls and accountability measures, do we need to be there every month? Is, I'll pick on Councilor Barnes, just because we're talking about Chinook Arch.
I got broad shoulders.
Is there value in a councillor attending that meeting seven times a year, whatever it is, total? So what does that do for you? What value does that bring to you as a council? They have great financial controls in place, good accountability, good governance model, and could a summary of Robin once a year suffice and make you all satisfied of our contribution? Now, Councilor Barnes sees value there, and that's great. I just pick it because it's the one wrong. But we have a number of those that I think it's good to question. What value does it bring back to this group to expend your time and energy to participate in?
Just to go back to that Chinook Arch, there was a time where we had received a requisition
from the Chinook Arch, and we were last council, and we were not pleased with what we saw. And we asked for Robin to come and to do a presentation to council, and we expressed our concern that obviously, I don't know if councilors that were assigned in those days brought those concerns at the table of those 40 people, but we surely wanted to make sure that our concern were heard loud and clear, because the requisition was going to be significantly increased. But we also knew that it all depended on Lethbridge decision, because all number per capita had absolutely no impact, so that we say year-on-year was made no difference. Lethbridge was really driving the status quo of the increase. And that year, Lethbridge decided not to participate. So this is where the question that Jeff is posing, very relevant, because as a community, all input has zero impact, zero.
I wouldn't say that.
Financially, it has.
Because I'm on, in the past, it may have been. But since I've been on the finance committee, that's been a different story, because I've been right in there in the thick of it, and giving them some guidance as to how we feel about it. For instance, as you're talking about the Lethbridge, City of Lethbridge, they had questions whether there was a value to them to even be a part of the Chinook Arch, right?
That bringing that up all the time.
So we did the, we did the cost-benefit analysis on that, and they found out that we were saving them, you know, in excess of $150,000 on their budget. Well, all of a sudden, they changed their total tune, and now they're totally on board. Now, when we talked about the requisition that we just recently received, right? So when we were talking about that, and if Lethbridge hadn't have come on board, then there was going to be some ramifications that it could have increased. But I said, why should we be penalized? So we talked around the table, and we decided we weren't going to change the requisition from the past, and it wasn't going to go up at all. So that's why I feel it's important for me to be there.
Other finance committee?
Especially on that finance committee.
But on the other, on the other one, I'm not sure that it has the same impact.
I mean, if I was only there twice a year, I wouldn't want to be any less than twice, but I don't have a problem going there for those meetings. I think they're great meetings, they're very informational, and I think that I should be there. But that's, that's up to you guys to decide.
But Councilor Barnes, would them sending us the minutes of those meetings be sufficient?
Well, I guess it could be, but there is no cost to, to the council for me going there, because they pay the mileage every time. I don't, I don't requisition for a mileage there, so it's not a big deal.
Carry on as is then.
Yeah.
All right, Schmidt Foundation, the two councilors, Bengery and Drew. This is a requisition, and it's a provincial foundational requirement that we have elected representatives on there. And also, like I said, it's a, it's a big requisitioning thing, and I think it's a need that we attend. We also put in our monthly reports on that one. Citizen of the Year is the one time, it's, Mayor Corwin sits on that, and other appointed, so we can just carry on with that. Communities in Bloom, Councilor Brown, importance of that is?
Yeah, I, this is one I feel that would be okay from, from an email. You know, if they were to email me with the minutes, or they need me to bring something to council, I don't think me being there is a-
A must.
Yeah. I don't on this one.
Okay, so we'll leave that at your discretion. Is that all right? Or do you want them to send?
What would the direction of this council be?
How many meetings a year do they have? How often do they meet?
Probably six or eight.
Yeah, probably eight.
When the spring comes, they meet a little bit more often.
Well, and in the winter, we do as well, because we do the Christmas lights, and we do, so almost eight to 10. It's quite a bit.
But you could get out of their minutes.
Yeah, I mean, they do great minutes, and Tara does the minutes, and so-
Maybe you go to half of them, whatever.
Yeah. What would the direction be? What, what would you like?
I really think that the way to go about it is same story as I heard before. If they need you there because they want you to have an ask for council, they should let you know ahead of time, and so that you can attend that meeting, to make sure that council is informed of their asking.
Okay.
Kind of like the discussions that they had with the memorial for the E.J. Wood Memorial, I don't think that it would have been right for them to go ahead without your input on that.
Okay, Councilor Self, economic development.
You need a committee, don't you?
What's that?
You need a committee that's made of more than you.
Sure. Actually, we're, the only thing I would say is that, after reading through this package from administration, need to change the governance a bit, because I just assumed the chair rather than-
Than a citizen-at-large?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's one change I would make.
Something we can look at.
And, yeah, there might be some need going forward to pump the air in the tires of this a little bit.
Okay.
There used to be a committee with citizens-at-large on it.
Well, there are, there are.
You have some?
Yep.
Good. So how many, how many sits on that?
Four other citizens.
Okay.
And one of them is a chamber member, so the chamber members.
There's a potential that one of them could be the chair.
Oh, they should be the chair.
Yeah.
So we'll get it corrected. I'll fix it.
Okay. Okay, moving on, emergency advisory, that's once a year, twice a year.
I have some concerns about that.
Okay.
I don't think once a year is enough. I think that we need to be, I think we need to be meeting at least twice a year, and when we have these meetings where we invite the business people and people that need to be concerned about emergency and stuff, I think we need to have them come, we need to have some training. And right now, we're just going through the binder, and I don't think there's enough there. I think we need to have our training.
In fact, you may see it differently, Mayor, that's fine.
It's not so much that I see it different. The province is coming with different requirements now, from the DEM, which is chair. And so I really think that there's tons of training that are going to be mandatory, and we're kind of looking at that and the inter-municipal discussion to have an assistant DEM. So once that's in place, then our role will be a little bit different here.
Good.
So we're not there yet. Give Jeff a little bit of time.
While you guys are at Brownlee, I'm at a mandatory DEM meeting.
Up there.
And Claire's home.
Okay.
And so there's a bunch of new legislation rolled out, so there'll be a little bit more coming on that, too. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll leave that, we'll leave that one, just move on.
It needs a little time, though.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, employment negotiations, that's for another, what, three years?
Four years.
Four years? Okay, so we want SCSS, Councilor Brown, there is a need there, I believe.
Agreed.
Okay, so just continue on the way it is?
Okay.
Fire, I feel, Councilor Self, Councilor Court, there is a need there, I believe.
Absolutely.
Okay? Okay. Have you got your county?
Just a, just a comment that myself and Jeff and Murray, the CIO from the county, and Roy Slavon, another member of the committee, will be meeting to negotiate or discuss the governance model, as well as the funding model, so.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Who is the chairman of that committee now?
Councilor Self.
And is that going to change, too, or is it going to-
It's to change.
When you have a board that is simply with all elected officials-
You have to have somebody.
One of them is a chair.
Yeah, okay.
It was Councilor, it was Councilor-
Councilor Lacy.
Lacy. So it's been a quick-
Appreciate that.
And they nominate within the board.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. The mayors and CEOs?
No, that's fine.
That's all fine? All right. We have two councilors sitting on the golf.
I'm sorry?
How often do you meet?
Quarterly.
That's quarterly?
Yeah.
We have two councilors sitting on the golf committee, Councilor Self and Councilor Brown. Is there a need for two councilors, and how do you feel about your monthly meetings, or whatever?
We don't meet very often. I, do you think we meet too much?
No.
Six times a year, maybe?
Maybe.
Let's just say with the significant investment that the town has placed in the golf course, and the significant investment that we will be making in the golf course, I think it's important to have two councilors on there.
Okay. Handy bus? The handy bus is a different can of worms, so to speak.
Candle of face, I understand. Candle of face, I understand.
Yeah, well, uh, I think we need to, to invite the chairman, Mike Livingston, to council to present, uh, he always gives his financial statements and presents them to, to Jeff, but we need to look at their governance model and how that's controlled, I think. So if we had Mike just come and report to council and tell us what's happening there, uh, Councilor Drew, you're on that. How do you feel?
He came last year, if you remember.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's annually, we meet two or three times a year.
Okay.
Um, we discuss budget concerns, all those types of things. Um, I think there's a good group there. Um, we've got a treasurer who's a part of an accounting firm, so she keeps an eye on things, so I think the invite for him to come would be fine. And I'm sure that we've done that.
We've done that.
Historical society, Councilor Court, you got that pretty good.
Let's go along. It's the last year, they've seen some huge improvements. They've got their governance model all lined up, everything's going. I'm not quite sure what this 2019, 4,200 and 2,5000 is, but...
Well, that's what we're budgeting for, to spend for them.
I know the 4,200 was for the utilities, but...
25 is the summer staff.
Oh.
There we go. Yeah, that's the staff.
No, it's been going to be quite well, so no problems.
And you've got a good leadership program there.
It sure seems to be going well.
Yeah. ICF, we'll leave that right alone.
You've got an AGM coming up through the...
Yes, the AGMs is a month. Yep.
ICF is, uh, is, is just starting up and we need to continue on with that as far as I'm concerned. You, Councilor Selk, Court and Mayor Cronin, do you have any comments on the ICF?
Stay tuned.
Yeah, exactly. There is, there is reports that will be coming and you will be private to what's happening there. As you remember, we had the release to the public that those conversations that we are having with the county, by the nature of the conversation, need to stay in closed sessions. Therefore, there will be no public release until we have reached an agreement and that is many months in the making, so stay tuned.
So, and so for your information also, I get the county news, news release and they did make a statement in there.
That was part of the package that we had to agree.
Okay. Library, Councilor Barnes.
They meet eight to nine times a year and they go over budget debris every month. I don't feel unburdened, overburdened with their, there are, I probably miss a couple of them a year, but I go to at least six of them a year and I'm fine with that.
Are, are you good with having them send, uh, send, uh...
Well, they send a report anyways.
We get the monthly reports.
We get the monthly report from, from Donna anyways as well.
So your attendance there, you're, you're all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor's release, that's a, that's a given. Mayor Cronin, okay.
I think the fact that there's that big budget right there, it behooves me to be there.
Yes, yes, it is a big one. All right, the next one, Councilor Court and Mayor Cronin, you attended the last Mormon Trail, Chattoqua.
Changes are coming there as well.
Changes are coming, yeah.
It will no longer be called the Mormon Trail. We're just looking at another different name right now. And the mayor, the mayor's street, no other government was here a couple months ago, so that's all in the, that's all in the plans. I think, I think things are starting to move pretty good, actually. Mayor, you feel the same way or?
I think they heard the message.
Yeah.
No money will be coming until it's fixed.
So, so I'm, I only met Mormon Trail, I had no idea what it was for the first year I was there, we only had one meeting, but now it seems like they're starting to make, define what they really are about, which is basically tourism.
I think we should leave, I think we should leave the assignment there.
Yeah.
Until this shemnajal is all strained out, so they had a, a come to the mayor meeting, you know, where she puts them straight. Municipal subdivision and development.
I just need to quickly ask, Councilor Court, are they asking for public input on the name change or, or having a contest or anything like that that get kids involved?
They haven't really discussed that yet. There was some needs thrown out last time. We've got three people steering a committee to try to find what it's all about.
The, the intent of that Mormon Trail is changing.
Yeah.
So it's changing, can't talk too much about it right now. They're working on developing a governance, new governance model. And when all that comes, it will come to council for approval or for input. So there will be that input. As to what else can be done with the change of name and et cetera, once you see the whole new package, it might help you understand where, where it's leading to. So give them a little better time there again.
Were we talking a couple months down the road?
Couple months down the road will be a fair statement.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, Barnes and Court, you're involved in municipal subdivision.
We haven't been meeting much lately because there has been a development that we're on, well, so you...
Okay. But, uh... So your need to, is still there for represent or?
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay, Parks and Rec, Councilor Brown.
This one is very taxing.
This one is, is...
But I love this one.
Do you?
Okay, Councilor, please help me understand, the time you pass on this one, you have a quarterly meeting, but you also have ad hoc committees, subcommittee.
Yeah.
How many of those are you attending?
Well, we've had, so it's roughly about one a month.
Ad hoc?
But we just started, so on the ad hoc, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'm saying the extra ad hoc is about one extra one a month, just because now we have the focus of an indoor rec facility and that's Councilor Selk and I, so we both go to that one. But as far as the Parks and Rec, we don't have tons of those meetings, we don't. We probably have, I don't know, five or six a year.
Four, five.
Yeah, like not, I don't have tons of those. So those aren't taxing. Those, I think, have helped us come up with a plan and a focus of where they want.
Under which you're able to function.
Exactly, exactly. So I don't, I want that, I want that one.
Okay, so you're okay?
Yeah.
All right.
You do a great job too.
Thank you.
Boris Coleman River Regional Services Committee is, is quarterly and I meet there and, uh, to tell you the truth, we get the minutes from their, their meetings with the finance. I'll have to pick and choose. I think I'll just pick and choose my attendance there.
Maybe the AGM would be a good time.
Yeah. Unless they have a...
They meet what, four times a year?
Yeah, quarterly.
Essentially, there is an executive committee.
Right.
That's a little bit the same model as Alberta South Grove.
South Grove, yeah.
So you have all the membership, once a year or twice a year, always often, they gather them together. But leading that organization is a group, a small group that is less than 10 people that are making all the decisions really.
And...
And then releasing the information to all. So therefore, the meeting monthly does not...
No, it's quarterly.
Oh, quarterly does not amount to much for a counselor to be there except to hear what they're doing, but it's...
So you're not voting on those things?
No.
No. So is that a bit of a governance problem too then?
No.
Then you have a board of trustees.
Boris is, is, is a government...
It's a regional partnership.
Right.
The issue they have is they have dozens of member municipalities, so it's unwieldy to give a vote over the table. That's the theory. It'd just be so unwieldy to try and do that when you've got 29 membered communities or I think I'm low. I think I might be low.
That's a lot more.
Those are 28, I was close, 30. Oh, 38, yeah. So the point is there's an executive and the rest of them get informed. That's the model they've chosen.
And the way you can make a difference is at the AGM.
Yeah.
And every once in a while, they'll, in their minutes, they'll have somebody pass away, a member pass away of the executive and they'll, they'll hold a, you know...
If you remember, Councilor, a few years back, we were concerned about what they were requisitioning for that.
Yeah.
And we asked them to come and we even went to one of the session and petition on behalf of the town regarding the issues that we had with the requisition. And they heard us. So that one thing that we can do, if you needed to let them know that you're not satisfied with something, you can always be put on their agenda at the executive level.
Yeah.
And I'll watch the minutes and if they have a presentation on, you know, like finding our aerial photography or something like that and I, I feel it's needed, I, I'll go to it and I'll ask them, it's, I'll do a presentation for council. And they, they have done presentations for our council in the past.
Do they, um, I remember when I was on that, or each meeting, they, they presented the financial statement, we voted on that.
That's at the AGM. Well, no, they do that, they do that quarterly.
Yeah.
And they, they ask for a vote on that.
Yeah.
But that's also, that's also sent to ICAO. That, those financial statements are sent to us.
You can see every check that's wrote.
Yeah.
Okay, so policing, Mayor Cronin, you, this is a...
Just a police review.
Yeah.
No, policing.
This is policing.
Not policy.
Not policy. It's right at the very bar.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I just, on this one, I wanted to ask the committee, we, we started this as kind of an ad hoc thing, we've kind of formalized a bit. My question is, it's actually not a formal committee of council. It's not assigned at the organizational meeting.
Do we need...
Should it be?
Yes.
And I believe it would be an important one to have.
Definitely.
Because we, we are in the business of keeping a town safe and we should know what's going on.
Can you recommend membership to that committee?
Well, it'll be based, your organizational meeting, you'll assign it, so.
Okay. Councilor Selk?
I'd suggest that we make it at least quarterly.
Okay. I'll draft a bylaw for a permanent committee.
Yeah, no less than quarterly, maybe. Let's put it this way, no less than...
Shall we meet at least four times a year?
When Council Bengry and I, we were on the police ad hoc committee, I just thought it was still going every, every, every three months. And I felt that when we were on it, that was a very valuable committee to be there to give them some guidance. What do you do now?
We haven't met on like a calendar quarterly basis. It's just kind of been on an as need, but I think both the RCMP are, I think they're game to formalize.
Yeah.
Like I think they're funds for creed and so...
Yeah. They, they would like to be there and...
Oh, yeah, no question.
I remember when we were on, we had some issues because that the former staff didn't want to give, you know, as much information.
And we're over that hurdle.
But we got over that hurdle.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, policy review, Councilor Brown and myself are on that. It's a once a year thing or as needed and I think we'll just continue on with that. Our powwow is, Mayor Cronin, you want to talk to the powwow?
The powwow has a terms of reference. The terms of reference are designed to have one elected official, one member of large from the town and the same from the blood tribe. And beside that, we are able to have subcommittees that work.
Okay.
So that's all what we have.
Your terms of reference, were, were they presented to council?
Yes, they were approved.
I was gonna, that one's this interesting committee.
That was Tara created that, those terms of reference.
What I was wondering, would you as a group consider that a town committee? Is it a committee created by the town?
Well, here, it's more like an inter-municipal.
Okay.
So that's what I was looking, when you had it in a category, I thought it doesn't really fit under the town, except the town does fund that and the blood tribe fund that.
Yeah, I put it as a town kind of partnership.
To me, to me, it's more like an inter-municipal thing, but you don't have a category for inter-municipal. You have regional and it's not really a regional. But it's, unless we change the designation that you have on the C and call it inter-municipal, the only thing is they are not only elected official on that one, it's a mix.
So my feeling with it is, is we treat it then a little bit like we just did ICF, where we create a bylaw which assigns councilors, but it functions as per the terms of reference.
That's the way it functions.
Yeah. So if I put something like that together, is that fairly okay?
To me, it works.
It's just sitting in kind of limbo as far as what it is.
When it requires a work, we work and really hard and then you don't know. But like anything, when you have an event, it takes a lot of organization. So yes, from a governance perspective, it has its own terms of reference. I have them if you don't have them.
Yeah, and I may, because there'll be a resolution and an agenda attached to that.
Well, it should be because every time we change them, we have to bring them back for approval.
Okay. Okay, I'll stew on that one a little bit.
Councilor Selk, you're up.
It's a great committee. It's, again, another, it's another regional partnership with economic development. It's governed by an executive committee of which I'm a member, a director. And it's the best bang for buck, as you can see, it's way cheaper than Alberta Southwest.
And they do a lot of very, very good work.
They just unveiled the electronic vehicle initiative yesterday.
Along Highway 3.
No, Carson gets one.
Carson gets one.
Yeah, I mean, we get one too.
Were you there at the meeting?
I was at ICF.
Angel was there.
Angel attended on behalf of the town. She represented us.
Interesting.
Councilor Barnes, if you remember, if you remember past council, I asked for a recharge station.
Well, it's more a fact that we are on Highway 2 that Carson is getting.
Good. Coming across that border, I can't imagine coming across that border and sitting in Carson with a uncharged vehicle.
Just drag themselves.
All right, so let's, let's go on. Now, no, let's not go on. We have some Rita's, Southwest, Badlands, do we, do we pay membership to Badlands?
You bet, we do too much.
Okay, now, we need...
We have a commentary on that, but yes.
We need, we need right now, I think, because we're reviewing these committees and these Rita's.
I'm just fine in there.
Our memberships, can we, can we suggest that we bow out of one or two of them? What's, what's, how are you feeling?
Okay.
It's two grand, by the way.
Two thousand bucks.
The, the one with Badlands, first of all, was brought to us under the assumption that it was going to be well less money.
Exactly.
For the membership. When the person came here and addressed that. And I don't know if you have seen any minute lately, but there is nothing that ever concerned South of Raymond. And I'm thinking...
South of Raymond.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that we benefit from being part of it. I really don't. There is something else going on with that Mormon Trail. This is why I say, let us wait before we make that decision and then decide.
I was just gonna say, we'd be better served to take that one, use it for...
Exactly, what's coming.
Councilor Barnes?
If I recall, when we decided, we had a large conversation, discussion whether or not we were going to go with the Badlands. And when we did, I think we said we were just going on a trial basis, that it wasn't going to be an ongoing thing. We'd look at it to see what the benefit was and if there was no benefit, then we would withdraw. So, but like you said, we would need to wait and see where we're going with the, with the Mormon Trail.
Councilor Selk?
Yes, we need to really look at it. You'll be surprised what's coming.
And we're gonna have much better representation than we might go that way.
Councilor Selk?
Would appear that with Badlands, that we don't, we're not as involved. We don't sit on the executive. We never go to any of their meetings. I do know that I think the funding from that could actually come from the Chinook Country Tourist Association, because they no longer exist. So the money for the, I think, if we didn't use the money, we could use the money if we decided to stay in or with the Mormon Trail, so there's money that we could find to do that. But I think before we pay our next fees, we should have a serious conversation about whether or not it's worthwhile. I mean, they came, they pleaded their case, we bought in. Maybe we need to either buy in completely or bow out.
I, I like the idea of that, that money going to...
Let's wait, let's wait and see.
Yeah, we pulled Chinook Country out of the 2019 and forward budget, but we added Badlands.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, but we did pull that out of 19, 20, 21 operating.
Now, we're not members of the Crown or the continent or anything like that.
There's not a fee associated there. We are by geography, but there's not a fee there.
We, we are through Alberta Southwest.
Yeah, right.
Through Alberta Southwest.
Yeah. I don't know, as part of our deliberations, maybe we need to have Badlands come back and explain yet again why it's beneficial for us to be there, because...
So we'll always find a good reason, except to us to figure out if a reason is worthwhile. I really honestly believe, let's give that whole tourism initiative that is working right now, being worked on, let's give it a chance, and then we'll make a decision.
I, I like the idea of sustaining Southwest, because they have done a lot more for our area than Badlands up north and so, that's just my opinion. So like Counselor Self and the mayor, let's just wait to see what's, what's happening with our...
Yeah, I would say, wait at least that we get some...
Okay, ad hoc committees, nuisance deer, it's just about winding down?
Not quite.
We're starting to prepare the information.
We're preparing the information now. We've had two meetings. And we're preparing a, an online presentation for the community so that they will be able to know how to deter the deer in their own yard. For example, there's a lot of flowers and plants that are beautiful. The deer can't stand them. They won't come anywhere near your yard. But there are lots of wonderful plants that they absolutely love, and everybody seems to love them, those plants. So we're talking about ways to deter the, those deer from getting there. And so that was, our initiative was to come up with a, with a brochure. Ryan Schmidt is working on that. And I was in yesterday to the, at the town office and visited with him, and he's got 42 pages of stuff. And I said, "Just keep on working on it. All the flowers you can find for people is great." So we don't have to worry about the deer, and we don't have to have smart people coming and saying, "Well, just shoot them."
Maybe some deer food guys are tolerant.
And the nice thing we've had, we've had the Fish and Wildlife Officer here with us every meeting.
Guys.
And that's been really, really good.
Can't we just make sure that every citizen has a possession and acquisition license?
No, you know, I, I feel good about the way that this is going. I, I think we're probably gonna have one, maybe two more meetings.
Okay, this next one is a big one, and I think we need to leave it alone.
They're right in the thick of it, right?
Yeah.
You're not pulling it?
And that's our wet facility exploration, so let's just move on. And there doesn't need to be any problems until, until the, the council members come forward with their, whatever their findings are. Community Futures, this is a, it's now a citizen program. And former Councilor Edmonds sits on that, representing our, our town, and he's doing a good job.
Do we ever get a report?
I haven't seen one.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it a time for us sometime to get a report? I mean, if there is a meeting every month, surely there's something to report.
Just any still questions? So, Community Futures, the fellow that's in Fort McLeod, he's at every chamber meeting.
Yeah, it's on your chamber, yeah.
I mean, we should get a report.
Sorry, it was escaping me, but Tony, yes. Tony Walker, I see him, but I don't...
Could we ask Mayor Edmonds to come in and get ahold of Tony and maybe make a, do a presentation?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll do that.
No, I got a feeling the counselor, or that Mr. Edmonds, former Councilor Edmonds, I know he's withdrawing from the historical society. He's retiring. He wants to get into the retirement mode. Maybe he, is he mentioning to you?
I talked to him last week, he didn't say anything.
Dave, yeah.
He's had a little bit of health issues, but...
He needs some help, yeah, that's what I think.
Counselor Bangery, I'd just ask a couple of things.
Yes.
I appreciate all the feedback. It lets me tidy up a few things. One thing, if you look at this chart, I just want to point out, we've got some committees and we'll use, let's use audit, just because alphabetically it's first, where we, we agree it's a town committee, but we actually don't have a bylaw to support that. So over the next few months, I'd like to, and I, I think I would have council support here, just start tidying that up. You know, they're minor things, no big deal. Nobody really cares if, in the community, if there's a bylaw about audit committee or not. But we should tidy that up, and so we're doing all that right. The other thing I'm just trying to get my head around, and we just talked about it with Community Futures. We agree that we're associated. We agree it's not our committee, but we don't really have things in place to say, "Hey, here's what we want from you."
Exactly.
We need some idea like, well, okay, so, so now what? Well, Dave Edmonds, if you're our representative, we'd like to hear from you once a year.
Exactly.
Or semiannually, or we need to create some kind of...
Protocols.
Protocols, even if it's not our committee.
Protocol for at least reporting, for accountability, nothing else.
Because you can't make a bylaw about Community Futures. You don't have the jurisdiction.
Chairman Bangery?
But a protocol.
Does he get paid for going to those meetings?
I think they cover it pretty empty. Yeah, we don't pay him anything.
We don't.
No, we don't, no. So I just wondered about this idea of how do we put some parameters around these committees that aren't ours?
Is it possible to simply have protocol written for those committees that really don't fall in your category A, B, C, or D? I don't know how many category you have, but I think at least three.
Well, whether we use those or not, it was just me kind of brainstorming. How do we bite these off, right? How do we deal with them?
I really think a protocol that would address the need for reporting, at least.
So I'll use airport as another example. It's not really our committee.
No.
It's theirs and they've invited a counselor. But we have a financial stake too. So in that case, what's our expectation of them? Is it annual reporting of the chair?
Yeah.
And then monthly committee reports to council?
Minutes, minutes.
So we just kind of formalize that and say, "Hey, guys, we're happy to send a counselor and continue to be there. However, we just need this from you. This is a requirement."
It's really too difficult.
Yeah, I don't think so.
For information purposes, and Jeff's struggling with this one also, our administration is struggling with this. Since we've had an interview process for volunteers to sit on these different boards, we've had zero...
Well, we don't get many. That's one other issue. And we're gonna talk about that in the next item here specifically.
Right.
Is how we want to address that, because since we went to an application base, we don't get many people to apply.
You know what? I looked at that application, and to me, it's not friendly. I, I really don't like the model of it. I really don't.
Then let's move on to 6C, which is the bylaw 1672, Truth and Reconciliation Committee. And, and then we will cover, you know, how, how we get members to sit on that. So Jeff, do you want to?
I wanted to put this to council. We, I still feel, and I think, I think you all still agree, this is an avenue we need to go down. We are not getting responses for volunteers in our community for this committee. And I would suggest it's not for lack of try. Now, we haven't gone out and banged on doors and begged and pleaded and conscripted people to come volunteer, but we are not getting applications. We have one in-town First Nation application right now.
We, we have another one, but...
We have three, so we have a, a place for a non-indigenous community member at large. We have three applications of non-indigenous individuals, but they're not community members. So we've got a professor from the U of L. And a couple of people who would be good, don't get me wrong, they're very interesting, but they're, they're not within our community. And so my question is maybe twofold. One is, do we expand the scope of the applicants?
Exactly.
Or do we make a concerted effort to pick a few people and go after them to see if we can coerce them into volunteering?
Okay.
Which is how we've really done committees the last 10 years.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, especially for this type of committee, maybe that is a specialized type of committee. I don't know. For that one, you're saying you have, for example, a professor at the universities that would be interested to be there. I would love to have somebody like that at the table that has some information, some insight from a different realm that might be quite connected with the two communities, and that could shed a lot of light. So is there a place for members at large in those committees? Does that mean that I have to be voting or not? Maybe not. There is also another issue that from the social media seems to have cropped up. Is there an honorarium that's going to be attached to those people that come to those meetings? And that is not indicated anywhere. And we don't know that, because we have no budget for that.
Well, it's never been a practice to give honoriums for committee members. We've just never done that. In that whole list we just reviewed, the citizens at large are, are not getting an honorium.
And so that is a question that was posed on the social media.
Yeah.
And for whatever it's worth, it's a concern of people.
Counselor Barnes?
So, looking at this Truth and Reconciliation Advisory Committee, is this a long-term committee, or is this gonna be kind of an ad hoc, as-needed committee?
It's going to take a lot of work for many months before you even start to get it right.
Right.
And then it's going to take some time over the years to keep on the top of things in order to make sure that education happens and relationship, working together happens, employment, I mean, you name it. There's so many different, so many different areas. The, the social aspect, the, the people who are vulnerable, all that has to be addressed. The health issue, you name it, there's so many different facets. I mean, I don't know where we start.
Well, to me, it's a very important committee.
Yes, it is.
And how, how many people are we looking for to go on this committee?
Well, there is a list, a combination of committees.
This was already...
Nine.
Yeah, yeah, it's nine total.
So it's one mayor in town.
And one counselor.
And one counselor, one education representative from Westwind, one Chamber of Commerce representative, one non-indigenous community member at large, and four indigenous community members at large, so nine.
So I, for example, I met with Austin Nun. They've committed to provide a representative as this formalizes, so that's fine from the school. Mayor and council, no problem. And I don't have any concerns about the chamber assigning a representative. That'll be fine. And we, like I said, we, what we're finding is when we, I think the intent when we said community member at large was someone that lived within the municipal boundaries of the town of Carstens.
Right.
That was the intent at the time, and I get that, and I can actually appreciate why that was the case. I support that. However, we're not seeing those volunteers now. Do we have a few? Yep, we, we've got some. We have a few county members. We have a couple of people from Last Bridge. But we're not seeing the folks from in-town.
Now, before I turn the time over to you, I'm concerned about these nine people. Have the nine people got voting privilege?
This is your voting group, yep.
Okay, now who is the non-voting?
They're defined at this point.
The non-voting members could be people, it's, it's going to be a public meeting, right? So therefore, you can have people in a gallery that can be there. That could be a mechanism to allow them for input at certain time, I would imagine. There is need for input. I'm sure that that would be great. But at the end, the decisions are made by that body.
Okay, so then, similar to ORSC, if that body of those nine members vote on everything, then it comes to a public meeting?
No, 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 no. That committee can have subcommittees that will be there to offer recommendation to that body.
My concern is, is how many people feel that they sit on a committee for an hour once a month, or two hours once, once a month, or whatever, and they have very, very good input. Their ideas are, are maintained and stuff like that, and then when it comes to vote, so what? Their opinions are not taken seriously, unless they, they have a voting privilege. Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, we have a lot of, of very gifted indigenous people that live in our community. Maybe we need to look at coming up with some names that we could think about and consider approaching them to be on, on this, this group. There's lots of, I mean, I can name four or five right now. I won't name them, but I, but there's, there's a lot of them out there that would be very, very good for this, this committee, that would be seen as, as a real positive thing.
After that approach, three people that are probably in there. And the intent for them was to fill that application.
Do we need to change the advertisement then?
Yeah, we need to change it.
Counselor Self?
Okay, in the interest of time. I think I would be prepared to recommend that the mayor, who's the one constant on here in administration, with input from counselors, come up with some names that we could lobby to sit on the committee for that item. Have the four indigenous community members. And they could also determine if we need to change the terms of reference from the one community member at large to see if we need to broaden the community from just our town boundaries to some... So in other words, we'll leave it up to the mayor and administration.
Yeah, and that should be probably somewhere down there, an opportunity for subcommittees.
Is the council good with Counselor Self's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just go with that recommendation? Jeff?
Sir, I was reading something there for a second. Yeah, that, that's fine. We captured that and we'll, we'll... You know, I appreciate, there, there's this fine balance. You can take the George Cuff approach, where he says, "You always need to advertise committees because you need to show the public that you want, that anyone can apply, but at the same time, beware the volunteer." And sometimes, particularly on sensitive committees, you as council may want to find people that you know are pragmatic and easy to, you know, good to work with and, and well-thought than just taking, taking people on the committee. So if we can maybe make a list, and, and Mayor, you and I may just have to go meet with them.
Yeah.
And sit down and, and have that discussion one-on-one.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'd be much more comfortable with that.
And we'll go with that recommendation, that, that committee looks at that.
Yeah, we'll proceed on that.
6D, Officer Brad, our...
Peace officer.
Peace officer, has asked that...
Before we dive into this lengthy bylaw, can I make a...
It's not gonna be lengthy.
Well, it is on paper.
It is on paper.
It covers every donkey in town, so I'm pretty sure that it's gonna be a long discussion.
No, what we're concerned about here, our peace officer, Brad...
I know the background. I just wanted to recommend a break.
What, oh, okay.
Do you want to do your dinner right now?
Sure, why not?
Well...
All right, wait. Let's, let's, Counselor Brown?
No, no, I, it's just, we have, we have Tim Anderson here, and he's, he's come to hear this part of it. And I feel bad to make him wait. If we could do a five-minute break and then come back and maybe just do that one, would that be okay?
Let's get this over with.
I, if you want, Counselor Bangery, I think...
Let's, let's do it.
I could summarize this pretty quickly.
Yes.
There's not really any new information in front of you.
No.
This is an amalgamation of multiple bylaws.
Right.
So what I wanted to ask for the purposes of this meeting is, before we formalize it for first reading, while it's open, let's say, is there things that are not addressed that should be, or things you're hearing from the community that are complaints, or things that you want to look at that you don't want in there anymore, prior to formalizing the draft? Because again, we've simply amalgamated three bylaws, just to ease enforcement. Should we look at other information before bringing it for first reading?
Counselor Brown?
I would say yes. So I did a little bit of homework on this, because... So I did a little bit of homework on this, because this seems to be a big phone call. People like to call me in regards to angry dogs, and I'm fine with that, but, like, Tim was attacked by a pit bull and lost work, lost money, it's a big deal, and I feel like our follow-through needs to be maybe a little bit better, because I called five people that had all been, within the last year, bitten, attacked by dogs, and that was something that unanimously they all said, they never, they never knew where things were at. Okay, so the dog was taken, and now I see it back out on the street, so it's gonna bite somebody else. That was, that's kind of what everyone was saying. So, as I was reading through this, just in the essence of time, I just, I didn't see the accountability that I was looking for in here, I feel like there just needs to be a little.
Angry dogs?
Yeah, a tighter protocol on it.
Aggressive dogs.
Aggressive dogs, that's essentially where I was going, and I actually wanted to, I wanted to know if, if Tim, can I address? Tim, did you have time to read it?
I've, not, not entirely, it's.
Okay, did you, after I talked to you, was there anything you came up with that you wish could have been handled? That we could do better?
Not specifically, because I, I can't really speak to it, because I haven't had a chance to read anything, but. I'm just more, I'm interested to see just what your discussion is on, like, with this meeting, it's, like you say, it's an informational meeting.
Correct.
And then it will move, if anything has to be changed, it goes to a town council.
Correct, exactly.
Mr. Anderson, can I ask that, once you review this document, if you have some concerns, if you'll get back to Counselor Brown, and, and maybe Jeff, and, and then they will review with council? Is that all right? And we'll invite you to that council meeting?
That's essentially all I had, that was it.
I have just one question.
Yes.
We're gonna enact this bylaw, are we gonna enforce it?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
It says, no person shall keep any livestock animal, any part of the corporate limits of the town of Carson without first obtaining a permit.
That's right.
So that means that every time Doug Sheen puts a bull in the property up beside my house, he's gonna get a permit?
So he would have currently.
He's agriculture.
He would have permits for so many number of animals.
Okay, and all those animals on Seventh Avenue, they all, they all have permits?
Yeah, so is.
And the horses that's on the property that Mr. Stewart owns, they have permits?
Yeah. Yeah. We, we have, we, we have some concerns about animals with the private citizens, yes, counsel?
I was looking in here for the, the fine deterrents and some of those actions with aggressive dogs too, because I didn't see it in here, I, I know it says that.
There'll be a schedule forthcoming, and I'll tell you, one of the changes we're proposing on that, and, and I agree, is, right now, this is one of the pet peeves, this, this is a Lloyd and then Brad change. Lloyd would prescribe in the bylaws that first offense was a warning.
Yes.
And that was because council didn't want us to be really punitive, I get that. But what we have is, we have Brad or Ryan that respond to a concern, respond to a call, it could be severe, and they do not have the ability to issue a fine.
Yes, that's right.
Right, because they have to issue a warning.
Yeah.
Because that's what the bylaw prescribes.
Right.
So the new schedule will be different than that one, there's some discretion up to, up to, up to that kind of an idea.
Right.
Um, we recognize there's risk of it being viewed as punitive, we recognize that, but there's gonna have to be some discretion applied, because when it's prescribed, they don't have the ability to fine. And I'll just give you a quick example, I know Brad, a while ago, responded to a guy terribly irresponsible with his dog, he was always causing problems with all the neighbors, but it was the first time someone had formally complained, and the guy was an absolute jerk from start to finish, and all Brad wanted to do was give him the biggest fine he possibly could, because he was just an absolute jerk to deal with, belligerent, rude, you know, and, and he couldn't, he had to stand there and issue a warning.
That's right.
And, and this gives, this gives Brad his authority, you know, so he's not bouncing all over the books and stuff like that. Counselor Silk?
So by the same token, Jeff, we will make sure this is advertised, so people know that they, they have teeth in this bylaw, so that if they're, no pun intended.
Yeah, sure, sure.
That there's teeth in this bylaw, and they could get fined for their.
Yeah. Counselor Barnes?
You know, the, the aggressive dog designation has been an issue that's been going around many communities in, in Canada for some time, and it seems to me that it's time for us to get on the wagon, the bandwagon, because there are, there are animals out there that are very aggressive. I mean, I know people who've got pit bulls, and I've petted them, and they've been friendly as can be, but I do know that sometimes those very nice animals will turn, you know, whatever provokes them.
The concern is the child, walking, walking to school or something.
We're gonna have to look at that, and, and I'm not saying just pit bulls, and there are other aggressive animals too.
Okay, so, so what are our recommendations, going to, to administration? Counselor Silk?
Have the mood that we recess for fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
People?
Okay, we'll recess.
Thank you.
Take legal action.
So, so that's where it gets tricky, is some of this morphs into civil matters too.
Yeah.
Right, now, and, and even, he knows this, his got really complicated on the civil side.
Yeah.
Because the person who owned the dog got mixed up in a whole band of other wrecks. So his got really complicated really fast. Yeah.